I now call to order the New Corlile City Council Special Meeting for February 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Bridge, do you mind calling the roll?
Oh, I forgot I had to be a clerk of council. Okay. Just go down the line.
Yep.
Councilman Cobb. Councilman Cook.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsey.
Here.
Mayor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilman Channing.
Here.
And Councilman Lauer.
Here.
Fantastic. If you don't mind standing for the invocation night by Vice Mayor William Lindsey.
High overhead please. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to meet to discuss the city budget. And we are on the right track, but I think we have more work to do, Lord. Father, we ask you to protect our firefighters, our EMS, our police officers, and our military. Bless everybody in this building, this council, the administration, and all the citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. But the back nine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No minutes. Committee of Representatives, non. City Manager Report, non. Comments from members of the public since the coming comments to five or less. Hearing none from our enthusiastic crowd. Committee Reports, none. Resolutions, none. Ordinances, none. Other business, Budget Work Session. Mr. Bridge, would you like to kick it off?
I would. If you give me one second, let me get my computer going here. Let's make sure I have the Excel sheet up, in this case, any changes are made. I don't, okay. Stop with reminders. Okay, before we begin, I will say that we have a new Finance Director, and I will start off by giving her fantastic props. We had a software conversion this year, and Debbie started at a very tough time, and she really has pulled through. And for that, we should all thank her. So, thank you Debbie for your hours upon hours of hard work with this transition and also onto this budget. Over the weekend, I think Friday, I'd emailed out the first, well, now a draft of what we had originally computed. And I had updated all the council members, but I will update the public and the audience and then those who will be watching later on YouTube. We had originally projected our ending fund balance to be around $879,000. Well, actually, this afternoon in Debbie's office, we found an additional about $124,000 in a line item, that that income tax money was not dispersed after Colleen left. Debbie was not aware of that fund. So, when we found it today, we quickly realized that, my Lord, that's going to have a major impact, not only on our general fund, but also our police levy fund as well. So, once we recalculated the figures, we have added an additional $83,110 into the general fund as income tax. And what that has done has had a massive ripple effect. Our now new ending balance for 2018 is $949,285 that we will be carrying over for this year. So, that's a fantastic step in the right direction for the city, so we're all very proud of it. A couple of years ago, we didn't have a lot of money, but we're definitely on the road to recovery. So, with that being said, we can start at page one. That's our general fund revenue. Really don't have much to, really can't do much about the revenues. You can definitely take a look at them. Just please note that a lot of these revenues, especially in the top half of the thing regarding our taxes and stuff like that, our income tax, real estate tax, those are actually given to us by the counting through, what is that, certified appropriations? Something like that?
Estimated.
Estimated resources, that's what it is.
Typical of estimated.
So, that's the number we plug into that. So, if any questions on those, we can definitely discuss them. One of the things that I noticed different last year than this year's is we saw a massive increase, about a $4,000 increase in our grass cutting collections. So, that means we're getting some money back on those houses we're taking care of. Our public annuity sub-aidment, that, it kind of goes year in and year out. We didn't have a lot of big property cleanups that we had to do this year like we had in years past. That's a good thing, because that tells you that people are taking better care of their properties, which is good for everyone involved. The remaining items there are seller tower receipts, that's, I mean, sell tower lease receipts, that should always stay about the same. Every five years, it does go up. We saw an increase in shelter house rentals by a couple thousand dollars. We also saw a massive increase in our interest earnings, and that is through our investments with Star Ohio. Any questions on that? And please note that there is a water tower reimbursement for $28,875, and that was part of the 150,000 to general fund loan to the Water Department for the tower cleaning project. And of course, the line down, the last one, transfer and income tax withholding, is the line that we just discussed, which shows the $83,110 in there from the income tax. So, our total projected revenues are 1,400, I mean, for 2019 proposed, revenues are $1,332,525. Ended 18 with 1.1,467,311. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope?
Miss.
Go ahead. It's all right. And we'll go on to expenses, and that's council expense. Debbie, feel free to chime in if anything you want to say, okay?
Okay.
Want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm kind of looking forward to this process to get to, for you to get to know how I appropriate things and why I appropriate them the way I do. I know everybody keeps saying I have 14 years' experience, but that's a long time to be doing this, and it's easy to misunderstand, not understand how someone would think to appropriate. When you appropriate, it's not saying that you're going to spend all that money. It says that you're putting money there to be available, to be expended. And if you, if you appropriate down to the penny, and you think you're cutting a budget down to the penny, and you spend one penny over that, you have went over your budget. And that is what you never want to hear. That's, that's what you try not to ever do, is go over your budget. You want to cut a budget, but what you're actually cutting is your expenses during the year. So, at the end of the year, you say, oh, look, we spent this much last year, but we spent even less this year. That's how you look at the big picture of how well a city's doing, how well we all together as a team decided how to spend the money. But when you start at this level, and you want to start, you don't always want to cut to the penny, because, like I said, if you overspend one penny of that, the perception is you went over budget for the year. So, that's why we kind of put a cushion in there. You want to make sure you at least have what you spent from last year in there, and then a cushion for, I mean, we all know milk goes up, bread goes up, everything goes up pricewise. So, you, you don't want to cut yourself short when you're appropriating money. And so, I just wanted to kind of explain that to begin with before we start. And that's my way of thinking, but you guys are awesome. We'll go from there, and we'll start looking at line item by line item.
Another thing I wanted to add on to that, too, is Debbie hit it home. I mean, you don't, the minute you spend over that penny and you spend above your budget, it's not good news. Do you remember the backlash we got this year when we had to add more money to the water line item? The same thing. We busted that budget line. We had to go back, add more money into it. And it caused a lot of questions and a lot of public records requests. So, those are the things we need to look at. More important of what I'm getting ready to say, we are going to be submitting our budget to you for approval in a vastly different manner this year. We've always gotten dinged on the auditor with how we submitted the budget before, and the city has historically submitted it very, I don't want to say vaguely, but vaguely. And what I say vaguely is, they would just have general fund, revenue, expenses, or expenditures, that's it. And it really didn't break it down. But we always got dinged with that on the auditor. There's never really a bad finding, just a recommendation. But however, we need to move forward and do it the correct way. So, how we're going to have it submitted to you guys this year is basically very broken down, almost line item by line item, and certain functions, and certain functions could be a group. But what that means is this, we will not be able to go ahead and move money around at our leisure. And what I mean by that is if one fund before was a little low, we can go to the fund above that and transfer money in, because how the budget was submitted. This year, we will not be able to do that. So, if we have $45,000 in wages, and if we spend $45,001, we have to come back to you guys and redo our budget. So, we won't be able to move money around from like, say, camcorder operations and move it up to, I'm just using example, moving it up to wages. We won't be able to take it from that line item to another line item, because how we will be submitting the budget to you guys. So, keep that in mind when you work up making these cuts, because Colleen years past could sit there and take $20 from another line item and put it into another line item. So, we will not be able to do that. So, Debbie hit it right on the, right on the head. You don't want to appropriate so thin that you get so close. Every year, we historically spend well under the amount that we appropriated. And it also has a ripple effect on legislation cost from having to do new legislation. Now, you got the attorney involved, you have time spent here to get it passed, so it does have a ripple effect. Keep in mind, whatever you appropriate here, we cannot go over without your approval.
And to add what he said to, to make it a little simpler, before, like he said, you appropriated per fund, just a total amount, you appropriated. And that gave you, that way you could do that all the time. Well, legally, that is not good to appropriate just by fund. You have to appropriate by categories, not necessarily line item, but like personnel is all in one category. So, if we have to transfer money within that personnel line item, like, you know, $50 because we missed, that's, that can happen, but not, not out of each category. Then you have to go back to you and back to the county, and that's not efficiency when it comes to the financing. So, it's, and especially in the city aspect, there's a lot of time that we have to, it takes time to do these types of things, and then we can't pay a bill because it's taken four to six weeks to get something redone in that aspect. But there is a little, I mean, wiggle room with that, within categories. So, like, I'm going to give you an example, if there's personnel, other, and capital. Those are just three, you know, categories that you could appropriate at that level, but we're going to try to go a little further with that here, but, so you kind of understand. And just ask me if I'm saying something you're not getting. I'll explain it again a different way.
Any questions on the general fund expense for council? I think last year, we didn't get line item. You guys just looked over and you, anything that was in the rest of the year we talked about?
Yep.
Anything over here, stick out.
Okay, Mr. Lindsey.
I do have a question on council's wages.
Okay.
Why is there a, looks like a $7,000 increase?
Because in 18, we are missing one council member. So, for the 2018, we didn't spend as much as we normally would with seven council members. So, and I, you know, I just put in enough so that if we pay seven for the entire year, we're a little closer to that figure.
But in 16 and 17, we only had $41,000 there.
I, you know, I'm.
You don't want to go down to the penny, though. That's the thing. Anything could happen. You don't know, six months from now, you guys could vote yourself in a raise.
It doesn't take effect through the next election cycle, though.
Well, that is, that's just where we're getting at, you know? We're not, I mean, I don't recommend cutting down to $41,000 either. You're going to cut real close, you know? And $1,000 there and there.
And it's a matter of $4,000 then you're talking, and it's not, I mean, obviously, we're probably not going to spend it. It's going to be a carryover. And that's how you kind of save money and put it in the piggy bank, because, you know.
I was just curious why it went up to $7,000.
Yeah.
I mean, I know the camcorder operations expenses probably went up, but.
And that might go up again. I have a meeting with Jason on Thursday to discuss on that.
Okay. So, I had, thank you.
Anything else on council's expenditures?
Can I explain the capital? We did add capital in there, and I want to know if that's okay, because what's going to happen is, once we get through this part, well, it depends on when we get through the rest of the budget. We don't, we've never had a capital line item for council. We haven't. So, we're, if this gets approved as is, we have to re, we have to amend the capital program that we already approved for 19, a while back. The reason this is there, this is part of the project that we're going to be meeting on in executive session. If we're going to build what we're going to build, I would like to see some technology behind there, permanent technology behind there for you guys. So, the paper method is no longer on the table. Basically, desktop computers. That would stay stationary right there. So, that's why it's there. Any questions on that?
No. Oh, Mr. Lindsey.
I do have a question. I'd like to ask Finance Director what her opinions are on your comment.
Comment about, which comment?
On the computer, the technology?
Oh, because we were discussing either an iPad that would, you know, smaller tablet that can sit, you know, in, if we have a new space. Even if we don't, and you're here, just, you can't have computers sitting up in front of your face. So, we were trying, so I was just kind of thinking when he was saying that, oh, maybe iPads, too, you know, just little tablets.
If you're asking whether we both agree, you guys need some technology piece, yes, we both agree. Because that has a ripple effect.
And.
Office supplies, paper supplies. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're asking?
And I would like to mention the training and travel. I know we've not had a lot of money in there, but the conferences that they have for local government officials, I don't know how many of you have ever went to them, but they are awesome. And, you know, going year after year, they kind of get boring, but they do have a lot of good information. There's a lot of other council members there that you can bounce ideas off of, how you do things. And so, I don't know if you do that, but I thought, I want the money in there so that if you need, need to pay to go, we have it for seven people to do so at any given time.
What year did, was it the first year you're on council, you went up to the conference with me? Did you get a lot out of that? It was a good conference.
Oh, yeah. I still, we look back at the resources.
Notes and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, so we decided to put some money in there. We don't know if the new council members wanted to go. I usually go to your public records for training on your behalf, but that makes me think I got to pass legislation for that this year. It's always a benefit to send council members off to these kind of training.
I think it was very beneficial, I thought.
Absolutely, 100%. Okay. So, we're okay.
And the public records request was beneficial, too, when I went to it.
I recommend, yeah, I go on your behalf, but it's good for each council member to go, because you see, right then.
To go at least once.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any questions or comments on the remaining part of council expenses? No? Okay. City Manager expenses. I have spoken with the Vice Mayor. I will be requesting to go not only to executive session next week for what we discussed for the project, but also to discuss the future employment of a public personnel. I think it's about time that certain people, high administration people, get the raises they deserve. So, that's, part of that is in there. So, we can go into executive session and talk about that piece of it, because I do have some discussion regarding Mr. Kipka that I would like to share with everyone. So, with that being said, in years past, you guys have always allocated money in there for me to get an executive assistant or some kind of help. I've never just hired it. So, I don't want you to think that is bumped in there because of that for this year, because I still don't have any intention of hiring an executive assistant. But there will be some additional wages I would like to discuss with you guys in executive session. So, with that being said, it does have a ripple effect on the other stuff down there as far as it benefits Medicare, PERS, public retirement. So, you know how we calculate those things, Medicare is a certain percentage, we just take the wages and times it by 0.3, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. PERS is always a lot more easy. It's 14% of the salary that the city is by law required to put into the PERS on behalf of the employer. So, we simply take the $99,000 times it by 14%, and that's what we get. Medical insurance, we're going to see that slightly go up, and again, I'll go into detail more about that in the executive session. I would like to go to a little more training sessions this year, because I think they are, again, very valuable. So, we did up that a little bit. So, any other things on that line item that you would like to discuss, we're definitely open. Anything on you, Debbie?
No, not, I usually always budget $1,000 in miscellaneous, and that kind of covers you, I don't, I don't know if, you know, at the end of the year, when we're trying, November, and we're struggling with trying to find money and which line item still has money left. There's a lot of, you know, I call creative financing, it's legal to take money from, you know, wherever you can, whatever's left within those categories. So, miscellaneous withholds anything like that, and if something comes up that's unexpected. So, that's why you'll see $1,000 in miscellaneous, just sitting there. That doesn't mean it ever gets spent, it just means if, if we need it, it's there, and it's only $1,000. I think that will.
I did add $5,000 to the capital due to the quote-unquote "project" last year. I allocated some money to buy this fantastic piece of machinery. It's still going strong, and I said I wouldn't put any money this year for it. However, given the recent lights of events, if that goes, does go through, I'm going to need part of that capital probably for my portion of what I need to do for the building. Any questions?
Counsel.
I just like the code talk.
The what?
The code.
I don't know if we're talking, like, I mean, I don't, I don't.
No, I know, I know.
You know, like, I don't know where we stand with it yet, so.
Counsel, any questions on Mr. Bridge and his department? Nope. Mr. Bridge. Finance.
Finance. Any questions on the finance? So, I tend to watch the money as best as to viability. I will call out the elephant in the room. We saw a massive increase in operational supplies, office supplies, from 17 to 18. So, I did ask Debbie for some more information on that, and, because that was half the reason why I set up, I did that expense report I emailed to you guys. We had a lot of purchases this year with the software upgrade for the council that had ripple effect. We had to buy some new individual office printers that could be, with the, compatible with the software conversion. We also had, I had to buy a lot of chairs for the office staff, so that kind of shot it up, and other miscellaneous items. It is on my radar. That is some of the things that we will be watching. I've already talked to Debbie about that this morning. But it is definitely a increase from how we've handled it in the past, so I am aware of that. But it has been justified as to why it has been up for this year.
And I will say that with me not being here for the whole year last year, I don't know where things were coded. And it's very easy within this system here that every, every department has office supplies. And so, if someone, I don't want to say this correctly, for instance, if, it doesn't always get coded into, like, finance, you know, if I didn't purchase it and water, it goes into water's office supplies. But at some point, if water runs out of something and they have to have ink for their printer, finance is where it goes. So, I can't, you know, there was, there was a lot of, and there's the copy paper, there's all the toners and then cartridges in there. They're very expensive, and they're not replaced all the time, but this year, there was a lot of them that needed replaced, so.
So, with this iPad system, it would cut down a lot.
Sure.
I mean, it would cut down tremendous.
A lot of copying, yeah.
Lots. Lot. I couldn't tell you how many reams of paper I go through. If it's a packet that has 40, 50 pages in it.
Paper and labor.
It's that, it's for the audience. It's not cheap.
You know, you can purchase, you know, tablets for 200 bucks, and you can then get all the information you need on the tablet through email, and you don't have to pick a package, you don't have to worry about, you know, it's, gets sent to you on your tablet. So, they're, they're very efficient, so it's a thought.
Counsel, any comments? Hearing none.
Okay. Planning wages, I did up them this year, and I'll tell you why. So, I got sick of phone calls last year for our flower beds and our parks being a mess. So, this year, I have every intention of looking to hire someone dedicated only to flower beds in the city, and rightaways, and parks, because that's something that our street guys do, and they already have their hands full with the regular grass cutting they need to do, through the abatements that we have to get cut. Some of the things just fell through the cracks due to lack of manpower. So, again, one of the things I would like to do is bring in someone extremely part-time to go and weed the flower beds, make sure they're nice, because we actually added flower beds last year to the city. I don't know if anyone noticed that we, up on Lake with the bike path interests, we made a big flower bed up there through that grant money we got from Keep Clark County Beautiful. So, it's a lot of work to maintain those. If we ever get flower baskets downtown, which I would love to get at some point in time, they can help maintain those. So, and it can also, can be for, I'm sorry, that's out of the Parks Department, out of planning, sorry, I want to hire another code enforcement officer. That simple. We need more than one. And then disregard what I said till I get to planning, to the Parks Department. So, that's why the wage, you see the wages increase for planning, just because we need more than one code enforcement officer in town. We tried to do that two years ago, and we tried to do it last year. It's tough to hire that position. So, I'm not even sure, you know, we'll try again for this year. Couple of years ago, we had someone last about two months, if that. And last year, we put, had no one even bothered to even apply for it. It's, that's a very difficult job. I used to do it. It's tough. So, we should all do our better job of identifying structures in the city that need attention or yards that need attention, and one guy is just not cutting it right now. So, I'd like to look at a hire in a second.
Hearing none.
Okay. Law Director. Set it at $80,000 just because of the annexation that was tossed around. I'm supposed to be looking at annexation this year, so this has to be come out of some line item. The only one that's going to come out of it is law. Doesn't necessarily mean our law director will get all that unless needed, then we have to reallocate, but we do need to pat ourselves not only for our normal day-to-day law stuff, which averages around $59,000 to $75,000, but we're also going to need some money in there for some sort of land attorney as well. So, that's why the law is up to where it's at. Any questions or complaints, comments on that one, recommendations?
Counsel. Hearing none. Mr. Bridge.
Anything done?
What?
See anything?
No.
Okay. Parks, all right, let me pick up my spiel about that again. Sorry, parks thing. To reiterate what I said, I would like to look at hiring an additional seasonal person just for flower beds, other miscellaneous small items as well, but really just to dedicate themselves to beautifying our city. I could not tell you how many times last year we got complaints or calls, and it happens every year. It's not like last year was the outlier year. But with that being said, that's what I want to do, just to help keep the city beautiful when you come into town, as you visit, even walk in the bike path and picking up litter if it needs to be done.
Counsel, any comments, questions on parks? Mr. Lindsey.
You have $32,000 for Capitol Outlay. What would that be used for?
That was playground equipment, $10,000 for playground equipment, $10,000 for bike exercise stops. Let me pull up the capital. I should have already had it up. I do apologize. It's right here. So, for parks in the CIP. Okay, we have $15,000 for shelter house upgrades additions. That was approved by you guys.
Yeah.
And then, the remainder, 10 for playground equipment and 10 for bike exercise stops.
Okay.
So, here's the thing. Shelter house renovations, where you guys stand out with that? It's $15,000 you have allocated.
I think with our project potentially coming up, I don't, I think it's fine, it's rented, it's always rented, you know? I know that some of us want, or wanted in the past tile or Wi-Fi, things like that in here, but I think with the project, I think we should cut that down. I mean.
I mean, something that I agree with you. I don't want to cut it too low, because at the end of the day, we do make money on this place, and we haven't had any renovations to it probably since it's been built. Kitchenette, that's still on the table with you guys, are you guys looking at redoing the floor? So, it's just, where do we want to go with it? Is that something you want to hold off on?
I just have, and, and I know that it's a little different because it's worded shelter house renovations, but shelter house renovations also includes this parking lot. And, and I just think this is a liability waiting to happen. And I think that if we left it in there, at least we could maybe, we would have some more money here to fix, you know, the parking lot. That was my thought, you know, when I'm, I'm kind of figuring money, I was thinking about that out there, so.
I'm gonna start with Mr. Cobb, and we'll work our way down the line.
Good point.
Mr. Cobb.
You know, I agree with, with the parking lot, we got a problem out there.
Mm-hmm.
But what I want to get at here is, along with the Parks Board and everything, they were giving ten thousand dollars last year. What'd they do with it?
Parks, that, that, last year was solely on me, I said this year I'd get with them and help them with the tournament. So they had, they had a line item in special events, which we'll get to, but the actual playground equipment, that paid for that dome and all that stuff out there. That's this one. They have a different line item in special events, is what we're getting at. I know what you're talking about.
When we discussed, Mr. Cobb, when we discussed it last time, we, Colleen put it in here, Mr. Bridge will show you.
Okay, also, what I'd like to see for non-residents increase the fee
Okay.
on the shelter house.
Okay. That's something the council wants to vote on. Just so you know, I, I think years ago, it was like that? All they do is have someone else that lives in the city come run it. So, I think it's fair, I think it needs to be done, but, well, if we don't see that massive increase like we expect, that's what they do. So if you lived in Park Lane and wanted the shelter house, you would just have someone for new, curl out and get it, you know? Um, but, I mean, if we get a little bit off of it, it's worth it. But that's something council's going to have to get with, with the fee structure and all that. So why don't you let me, um, let's get through all this stuff, and then we'll probably, once we get the budget approved, then we can have the talk. Because there's actually some things that we should probably look at all, our fee schedule from top to bottom, and readjust it. Because it hasn't been updated since I done it last, then I'm still Planning Director. I mean, it was years ago. So it's something that we should probably look at as a whole.
Counsel, any other comments on the parks? Mr. Cook.
I definitely would love to see the parking lot revamped, additional lighting out here, because you go out of here at night, it's darker than dark Mrs. Mahappy's barn.
Do we have specific on here? Let me see, shelter house upgrade addition. Yeah, seal floor and other upgrades and door addition, so we're good, out of work.
All right, what about, uh, widening out the driveway?
Down here?
Yep.
I'll have to get with Howie, I don't see why it'd be a problem, but no, there might be easements on either side.
Well, and
That's something we'll look into.
You know, but at my thought, if we have a fairly good sized group here, you've got them parking on both sides. Now you've got one lane down the center.
Sure.
And that's all you've got, so. I think if we enhance the parking lot, the driveway, the lighting, I think you're going to get a little few more rentals out of it. I also would love to see something done about the upfront fee that they paid or the deposit. Because I think at some point in time, some of the damage that has been done in here, we may not be collecting. I would love to see that fee go up. Somebody from some department come in here the next morning after we have an event, check it out. If there is damage, bring it to somebody's attention, and that deposit will help.
We don't have a lot of damage per se. What I see that is not fun is people who like to hang streamers, and they don't get the tape off, and then our street guys have to get on the ladder. Because they come, then every morning, they come here and check it, especially if someone had rented it before. Um, and that's what we see a lot, people sticking stuff on the wall, not taking it down, little stuff like that. Very rarely do we get, oh, I broke, I don't want to say, like, broke a window. But I understand what you're saying, because a twenty-dollar key deposit really isn't
Well, I go back to the fact of looking at these chairs, they need to be redone, and consequently, that has occurred over the period of time.
Gotcha.
And I'm looking at markers, uh, wax, God knows what else on the chair.
Sure.
It's not, I don't want to say that. To me, looking at, when you come into a council chamber, and you're looking at a chair that's got something on it, some of these have got the levellers busted off of them that need to be replaced. So I, I would love to see that.
Sure, I agree with you. Do you want me to go ahead and put a note to look in chairs, cost of chairs too out of that fifteen thousand? Because that'd be an upgrade as well. And then I got parking lot, widened road, and lighting.
Well, would this still be allowed to purchase those chairs with the upcoming project, even though we're not in the park?
Well, again
Well, no, because this is a capital line item for shelter.
For parks, yeah. Well, I'm saying, like, for these chairs, which is what you're talking about, they'd have to be something different.
Right, I've got both ends of it. You've got chairs here, and you've got chairs out there.
Okay.
So, you know, at some point, there should be, I guess the council chairs for the cable here are not too bad. But if you're having a general
No, the chairs are bad, they're all
Another type of chair, much like a plastic chair that is going to be a little cheaper.
I think for probably eight, nine hundred bucks, we should only get empty chairs.
Well, you suppose we could go down to that hotel motel
Mendelson's?
What you call it, place and pull some of the stuff in.
Have you seen the fabric they use on those things?
Ms. Watson.
Um, there's a couple of different places, uh, I'm trying to think of the name of the place, uh, Laritz has chairs. But sometimes, you know, Sam's, the chairs that they have there that are good quality for things like this, you can buy them, and they're, it's, actually, we've done that over there and, and found that Sam's was a good price on chairs for seating for the residents, so.
Mendelson has used, does it have used chairs though?
Nope.
Does that hotel, Licorice Place, still open up there in North Dayton? Next to the rest of our supply stock?
Yeah.
Is it still open? Yeah, but there's multiple places. There's a party store in Marine that's absolutely humongous that sells this kind of stuff too, so. Um, we'll look into that, absolutely. So chairs it is?
Mr. Sh, Mr. Lindsay, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Shammy? Mr. Lowry?
Sure.
Fantastic.
Thank you, um, yeah, Deb, I was gonna mention it right before you did, and I agree that, you know, if we could, no, 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 you're fine. Um, if we could get it repaved, I don't know if it would be possible with Howie redoing, uh, uh, what's the road he's doing this year? Galwood.
Galwood.
Galwood, if he could tie that in and, no, because the way it's done.
I, I mean, that's where
Well, no, what I'm saying, no, I'm not saying use the same money, what I'm saying is, is who it can, if he's adding more on for side jobs, does he get, like, maybe a little cheaper if it's done at the same time?
Bulk rate.
Like a bulk rate type thing.
Yeah, I don't think that project looks like this, this is a Galwood project, like the Prentice project, it's authorized through the county, so any kind of, any leftover material, I don't think they're gonna say, here, use it for whatever project you need. That's gonna be, and I could be wrong, but I'm most positive I'm not. Um, we can just look at paying outright for this, but I see what you're saying.
Because we also
We do any other project, piggyback off of it.
We don't have any handicap parking spots out there labeled either, and I think that needs to be addressed as well.
I think it needs to be addressed, like, tomorrow, I'll be honest with you. We can just put a sign out front somewhere, I was thinking about that the other day.
Um, also, is this the second or third year that we've, you know, at least put in the budget fifteen thousand for upgrades? Haven't we done it a couple of times?
Yeah, it's just, it just keeps rolling, it doesn't roll over, it's just still fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
It doesn't accumulate. But, yeah, we've done this for, I think we've done it since sixteen that I know of.
Yeah, I know the, uh, you know, there was early talks about different versions of what council members wanted. Some thought of a, just a small, you know, counter and some microwaves and things like that, and I, you know, I was one of the people that liked the idea of adding just a, a small room right there, which I think Howie got the price from, uh, Ash Ball for like twenty-five thousand dollars to add that room on, so. I don't know, I just, I, I just like the idea of getting something in here. I, you know, because when we, when we started talking about that, there was a lot of positive feedback that people were really interested, you know? Because there's families that do, like, Thanksgiving dinners here every year, and they said they'd love to have a refrigerator and a microwave at least, so.
I think you could do that in probably this corner over here, maybe no windows.
I just don't want it to look tacky, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, you, you could probably be done and put a refrigerator and a microwave over there and make it look nice. Doesn't have to be a full-blown kitchen, it don't need, I don't think it would need a, uh, you know, a stove or an oven and stuff like that. Because most people that come to, they're gonna have stuff in crop hocks and roasters and stuff. They would need, uh,
Counter space and a microwave.
Couple more outlets than, than what's over there, but, you know, and have them up at counter, above the countertops. I don't think we would need wall units, uh.
Build a countertop, have storage there.
Yeah, just have the bottom storage and countertop and a microwave and, and a refrigerator.
I don't, I just think, just not, no storage whatsoever, just the countertop, a sink, uh,
fridge and a microwave.
Maybe a microwave, yeah.
Instead of sink.
Yeah, they have to have, you have to have a sink in here. I don't think you can use those sinks in there.
That'd be, yeah, I mean, if they want to wash utensils, like, ice cream scoop utensils or something.
Yeah. And then we're getting into
Well, I think you guys need to go, I mean, you guys give us clear direction, because we haven't had clear direction on which way you want to go with it. So however you want to, you guys want to get together, maybe do executive, I don't know.
Because what, with, I'm sorry, isn't, uh, what's, the, where's the other shelter houses around here that we
Other township.
What, do you know what it costs to rent?
Uh, we go there every year.
It's got a, like, a separate kitchen, right?
Well, yeah, it, it's like in the back, but it also has a, like, a piece of plastic going up here or something like that, I don't know. Buffet.
Yeah.
There's a, um, I ran the concession stands for like fifteen years over there at Bethel. And, um, there's a store, we often need more, that we bought a lot of equipment from.
Washington.
What, yes. And so they have a lot of neat things that you probably can take a look at stainless steel, you know, pieces that could be a sink and that could be hooked up, so. That's an option too, to go there and look.
Yeah, I, uh, I mean, I think I'm probably the only one that thinks this. I, I would love to see, because I think putting something like that in here, me personally, I think it's gonna take away from the building and make it look a little tacky. I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. Um, you know, because there's a pad, if you walk out, there's, there's a pad out there, a concrete pad, and that's about the size of what I would like to see it be. That way, you walk into that door, that door would come down, and just, you know, I'm not talking a full-blown kitchen as far as an oven or anything. You know, I don't think we would want anything with heating elements just in case fires and stuff, but, you know, microwave, a sink, a fridge, or a freezer, or both, and, you know.
But this, this pad out here, Mike, uh, without knowing how it was poured, if it's just concrete?
Oh, no, no, I know, I'm saying, I'm saying the size of that pad is what I like for the addition.
I think we could probably look at that, but myself, I would rather maybe look at it later. I don't know, do you have any ideas what something like that would cost? You know, uh, maybe the general fund can pay for it sometime next year, and, yep, we all decide to do that. But, you know, it, uh, you're probably looking at probably twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars
Oh, yeah.
To, to have that little room built and plumbing and electrical
That's what I
Appliances, you can probably buy, I don't know if you'd want to buy used appliances, but, uh, you can get cheaper appliances, you don't have to buy top-of-the-line. You, you know, two, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars for a, for a refrigerator or whatnot.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what this council thinks on, on that.
That, that is what, I think, Howie
Mr. Cook has been waiting patiently.
What if we increase that to twenty-five thousand and save this discussion for later? At least you've got the money there if you wanted.
There you go. If, that, that's a good idea.
Twenty-five thousand?
How do you feel, Counsel? Mr. Cobb, how do you feel?
I mean, again, we're not spending it, it's just there.
Then
If we decide.
Yeah. Then council would have to approve the expenditure.
Oh, yeah.
Correct?
Oh, oh, yeah, if anything over, yeah, this, this, I don't care if it's five thousand bucks, you guys are gonna get it. Like, it's best to serve, just so everyone's on the same page.
Mr. Cobb, how do you feel about that?
I, I just can't see it out there.
Okay.
Can't, what, I didn't hear him.
I can't see having a kitchen out there.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Cook?
I'd say go ahead and increase the money there, if then at a later point, we decide to do it, the money's there.
Mr. Lindsay.
I don't think the outside kitchen is the best way to go. I think it would cost more to do that than it would be to put it back in that corner and just make like a galley kitchen out of it. I mean, I, I don't guess I would have a problem, I don't know if I'd want to go twenty-five thousand or not, it's, I think that's what it's gonna cost, possibly more. So, it's my opinion.
All right. I'm not a big fan of the outdoor kitchen. Uh, I support the idea of having, uh, stuff in here in the back, so I don't, I'm not up for the twenty-five thousand that Mr. Cook has suggested.
Mr. Shannon?
I have to agree, because I think that project will probably cost about forty thousand when you buy everything, maybe. I'd say maybe.
Mr. Lowry? We already
You kind of, uh Know what Mike thinks. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, well, he still has, he still has a right.
No, no, that's fine, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing it there, I mean, because it's not, I mean, and it's being spent, but, you know, if that's the way council wants to leave it at fifteen, then that's why there's six of us at the current moment.
Mr. Bridge?
Uh, I would support you guys up in it, and this is why I say that. You're earning the, you have a projection of seven hundred thousand dollars next year. This is something that citizens come into, people from outside the city come into, you want to put your best foot forward. There's been no upgrades on this since it's been built, period. So when I look at this, do I think the outside, I don't, I don't know, I'm no architect, but there needs to be something in that back corner or out there that's gonna keep us competitive with Bethel Township, because we lose to Bethel Township sometimes. So with that, I'm not saying a full-blown kitchen by any means, I'm not saying it has to be a five-star place, but I think the floors need to be done. I think there needs to be some sort of kitchenette back there, and I definitely need the parking lot that you've looked at.
I think we can have the, the building over there, um, that's that place, the retirement, we can carry out with their own separate center. We can have that too, because of the kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
It's just easier, and when you're trying to do something nice, you don't really want to set up your stuff back there. And it takes away from the environment that you're trying to have, or, um, it does take away space too, especially like the kids' birthday parties.
As a parent, you have kids running around, or with them running around back here, coughing, hanging out there, spaking in your camera, sneezing. I mean, as a parent, I
Done good, come on.
Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the general renovators could make it look really nice over in that corner, I mean, they could blend it into the
Can I make a recommendation? I think you guys should put twenty-five thousand in there and worry about the discussions later.
I agree.
Because
All right.
It's, it's, it's gonna go back and forth.
Counsel, how do you feel about putting twenty-five thousand in there? Mr. Cobb, you already made
Yeah.
Mr. Cook? Mr. Lindsay?
Because if not, what's gonna happen is, the moment these renovation happens, we're already gonna be amending the capital program as is. We might as well knock it out one stone, because if not, four months down the road, if we go through with these renovations, now we have to amend the capital program again. Twenty-five thousand dollars is not gonna get expended unless you guys approve it.
If, if we're gonna do that parking lot, I think it's gonna cost more than fifteen grand to do the parking lot.
It's gonna, it will.
So, if we
Do you have to take a choice then? Either upgrade this or
Yeah, we'd have to take a choice, and I think the parking lot is
Or put fifty thousand in, and, I mean
Well, I'm never about to
Well, no, no, I'm, Lord, neither am I. Lord, no, but I'm saying if we're gonna, if we're talking about doing two things this year, to add that potential build on, that's twenty-five thousand what we got from Ash Ball.
Yeah, that was, that was from Howie, he said Ash Ball said twenty
Never look at doing another, you know, paving the parking lot, yeah, it's gonna be more than twenty, it's gonna be more than fifteen, that's for sure.
Yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say, that parking lot, especially if you're thinking about
Widening it, putting in
Fifteen's not enough for that, for sure.
Yeah, so maybe look to do twenty for, what do you think, Deb, twenty for the parking lot?
I think you need to go about twenty-five.
I
Because you'd have to have strike two.
And just remember, you know, it takes a while to do all that engineering, all the stuff, so it's not necessarily, you put it there, and it's a, it's, it's in the piggy bank. If we need, if we're gonna do one or two projects, it's there.
So do you
You don't put it there, then you can't do it.
It'll work now? So, I, so do you wish we had twenty-five thousand for road repairs or park repair? Wouldn't that be our topic?
Isn't there two different lines here for that, right? There's one for updates, and then there's one for asphalt, concrete, right?
But that's, that, well, that's, yeah, that, but that, it is, but here's the thing, I mean, it's a capital improvement for your shelter.
So it doesn't matter where it goes?
No, it needs to go in your capital line.
Okay.
So, we already, in our capital line item, we already have thirty-two grand.
But Calporo Outlay.
Our Calporo Outlay?
Yeah, for parks.
Yeah.
So we don't need to move any money around if we, if council doesn't support the twenty-five thousand?
But we're set for
Oh, no, 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 that's, no.
You said it was for playground equipment.
The thirty-two thousand, I'm sorry, is, is the playground equipment, bike trucker stops, and a mower.
Okay.
And the shelter house addition upgrade is a fifteen thousand.
Mr. Cobb?
You're talking about wanting blacktop driveway?
Yes.
Blacktop or con, concrete? Blacktop's really expensive, isn't it?
No, it's cheaper than the top.
Cheaper, well, much cheaper than concrete, yeah.
Well, you have experience in construction, well, how much you think it's gonna cost to blacktop that?
Well, first thing, you're looking at close to forty thousand, because they go out and put a new base down.
Just for the base?
The base is gonna be close to fifteen thousand.
Oh. Okay.
Because it's fancy out there.
What about mill until?
Huh?
What about mill until?
You can't mill it, there's nothing there to mill.
Well You're gonna, you're gonna
I live on the second worst road in the city, so trust me, it works.
I'm just gonna let you all know, it works.
He's a beneficial of the middle.
I'm just gonna tell you right now, the second worst city in the, in the city of New Corral, it works.
It works.
You got blacktop over there.
But they're gonna have to come in, take out the old base, put a new stone base down before they lay the blacktop. And I guarantee you're looking close to this base alone, fifteen thousand.
All, all we're looking at is to put the money in there All, all we're looking at is to put the money in there in the event that we decide to go ahead with this.
Right.
So if we put twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand and decide not to go with it, we're not going over budget, guys.
Right.
We're, we're losing the, the whole ramification here.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going anywhere, unless we say so.
As long as we've got the money, put it in there. If we want to do it, fine. If we don't, it's gonna be there when you get done.
And it's still our approval too, whether we do it or not.
Well, it's underneath.
No, I, any, anything like that, I'll put you, I'm not gonna, anything like that, you guys are.
Yeah, so regardless if it's there or not, it's.
Mr. Cobb, how do you feel? Good? Twenty-five thousand in it?
I'd go with more than that.
Huh?
You think you better go with more than that? We put a road in.
I think more than that.
What do you think?
Isaac? You wanna go to fifty?
I'd go to fifty.
I agree with what you said, like.
Miss, Miss McKenzie, Miss McKenzie, Mr. Lindsay, go ahead.
The, I'm not, uh, real interested in putting fifty thousand in there. I think this parking lot vote's gonna have to be done over a couple of years. Uh, I would be willing to go the twenty-five, but I'm, I was, no way I would go fifty on that. And then next year, when we do the budget, put another twenty-five.
That's not how it works. Then you're just rolling back over to twenty-five.
No, because it'll be done next year.
You're not gonna, you're not, well, he just said you're not gonna pave that down there for twenty-five thousand now.
You go in there, you go in there and pave, you go in there and pave part of, part of it now. Come back and pave the other part. The first part's just paved, ruined. Because what they pick up in the bad stones and asphalt, track back over to new and you just ruined it.
But I'm not, I'm talking about just doing the gravel work this year.
It won't last long.
It won't last, why, if they redo a new base, why wouldn't it?
You put the gravel down, you get all kinds of rain and traffic over that, you're gonna pump it.
It's not gonna work.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Just, I just want to say, just remember that when you're allocating money, appropriating uh, money in, in a particular line item, you're putting it there for, you know, a reason, we're talking about whatever. But when you don't spend it, it, it's in that line item and it won't be spent anywhere else. So if you put it there, it's kind of a savings there. So if you don't get to it this year, I mean, with your discussions later on on how or what, or what you want to do, the money still is in our account. But it holds it there so it isn't spent anywhere else. So you gotta, sometimes you gotta think of terms like that.
It's just like going to the bank. Take fifty thousand, you put it in the bank. If we decide not to do anything, it's there in the bank. Guys, that's what we're talking about.
We're not overspending, it's just.
Yeah, we're not overspending and you don't have to go back. If you only put twenty-five in there and this thing comes into fifty, now you either got to transfer funds or you're hung to next year.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Cobb?
Oh, you're fine.
Let me ask a question, question here. Let's, let's stay with the fifty, but let's see if we can get a asphalt company come in here and give us a rough idea of what it's gonna cost.
I'm fine with that.
Huh?
I'm fine with that.
With, you know, it may, he may find a good stretch of gravel out there. He doesn't have to tear out, but it's real bad up here in the cul-de-sac or circle.
Yeah. Council, how do you feel about fifty?
I'm fine with fifty.
The roads. All right, fifty.
Quote asphalt. Any recommendations on companies?
And me, you would probably be one of the local.
Okay. I'll give you guys later about quotes.
So this is going under.
Shelter house renovation.
Renovations? What'd you guys decide on? Fifty?
Fifty.
Okay. Any other comments on this page?
We wore those ones.
All right, I know, right? All right. Special events and lantern buildings. Mr. Bridge?
Um, I don't know what's put in for this special events for parks and rec board, so three thousand, five hundred, it was ten thousand last year. I just put, I did have it as a thousand, but I upped it up. That's your guys' discussion. I don't know what they.
Mr. Cobb, the events earlier, Parks and Rec?
This is the one you were commenting on earlier, for Parks and Rec Board.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm just kinda curious, what they, what did they spend the money?
They didn't do anything last year because their bylaws have not been approved.
They didn't get the money, right?
Yeah, they didn't. Well, they, there's like.
It's been about five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
That's always been.
We didn't, because our bylaws haven't approved, so we can't spend any money.
Who asked to approve the bylaw?
You guys do.
One that has to get them to us.
And that hasn't been presented to us.
As far as I know, I thought it came back to you guys coming in.
Not that I'm.
You want my honest opinion? I think that the bylaws, I'll get with Lynette, I don't think they've come back yet, but it doesn't need to be so complicated. We don't need a sixty-page booklet for our bylaws. It just needs to be pretty simple. Um.
I mean, we all had, had a meeting about last.
Actually, you're wrong, because you have existing bylaws you can go off of from the previous Parks and Rec Board.
We're allowed to.
Now, they haven't been.
You were asked who was weren't allowed to.
I don't see why, I don't, they, were they voted down before the previous bylaws? Were they voted in before?
Well, what happened is we were timed a few events, and then Mr. Cook brought up the subject of the bylaws and that he wanted to go over them. So he brought in Hoover Heights ones and we talked about that, but.
Well, yeah, but.
Something ended up through there.
The Hoover Heights bylaws also govern their board of zoning appeals, their planning board, and it was just too encompassing for what we needed.
Yeah, we just need the direction. We don't have.
Um, but I think the hookup was that last year, was them finding out what they can and cannot do so they don't make the union mad. And it was just.
Yep.
Call me and find out.
Mr. Cobb, you've had comments on that? Are you buying thirty-five? Do you want to go higher? Do you want to go lower?
Well, I mean, Mr. Bridge is talking about wanting to plant flowers and stuff. If the Parks and Rec would do that.
That wouldn't be Parks and Rec. That'll be underneath the seasonal employees.
You could put it under Parks and Recs.
No, because the union would complain big time.
That would be something that.
If you go out here and put flowers right out here to opening, that's Parks and Recs.
No, that's.
No, that's, that's seasonal employment.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec is more for like programs like Easter egg hunts and stuff like that. They can't take work away from a city position. That was what we hung up on last year. Yeah. You know, so when it comes to maintaining the flower beds, that's more of an in-house, paid position.
Mr. Cook?
I'm okay with what we've got.
Mr. Lindsay?
Mr. Bridge, should he originally had that at a thousand dollars, I think fifteen hundred would be plenty.
I just had it at a thousand as a placeholder. I figured, I, I just put something in there as a placeholder originally. So I figured you guys would discuss that. I figured Mrs. McKenzie would be here. I'm sure they have a whole slew of great things they would like to do. So I think there should be something in their form, because I would anticipate this year that the whole bylaw fiasco is done and over with, and they can start putting on events for the city.
I feel like Mr. Lindsay feels it fifteen. Mr. Shammy?
Fifteen to two thousand.
Mr. Lowry?
I'm fine with thirty-five, because.
Yeah, fifteen's kinda, kinda close for him.
You know, thirty-five, I mean, putting on events is not cheap. I mean, it's, you know.
No.
Flyers.
If they, if they do anything for the fireworks event coming on, I mean, yeah, I mean, like I said, the thousand no way was indicative of what I think they should have. They asked me, I think they should have about five or six, maybe back up to the ten that they had to begin with last year, because they didn't get a chance to use it. Um, but then again, I just left it open for you guys to discuss, because I'm sure that would have been a topic of discussion council would like to get at.
Do you all want to compromise in the middle at twenty-seven, fifty?
Well, I mean, we had it at ten last year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't.
Well, I'm gonna see what you can do with twenty, twenty-seven first.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know why we would go such a drastic cut from ten when we agreed on ten last year.
Mr. Cook?
Again, we're missing the point of this whole budget session, guys. Is put the money in there. Again, if they don't spend it, again, like Mike has said, you're talking about doing events. Those don't come cheap. If you're gonna do an Easter egg hunt, you're gonna blow fifteen hundred dollars.
On publication alone, just promoting it.
Yeah, and, you know.
Printing, buying eggs.
If they have anything else.
Yeah.
In there, we used to have Chitacua down here. We don't have that anymore.
Right.
There could be a, you know, a musical situation developed in the park, but that's gonna cost money. You can't get a band for less than three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars.
We spent on the ball drop, which is a three-hour event, we spent almost a thousand dollars on advertising just for that one. And that's only three hours.
But that's a massive event with, I mean, it, and this is.
It's a cut, it's a.
But, but again, you're, you've got to return some of this money to the people. You've got to provide events to get people into the parks. We're just putting money in the piggy bank, guys. We're not doing anything other than that.
Yeah, it's probably just going close to a thousand dollars to do a cannibal process with chaos, one of the benefits for a few hours.
Yeah.
For the base price of advertisement, illustration, all of the stuff it takes to, to do that, especially where it's not approached, you know, the tent, sound system, microphone, I mean, all, all of it adds up.
Would you guys be willing to compromise at maybe like seven or eight instead of the full ten?
Seven or eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Cobb?
Go ahead.
Where you at number-wise? You go with thirty-five? You want to go up? You want to go down?
I don't have a problem with the thirty-five hundred.
Mr. Cook, I think you're, you're at seven to eight.
If, if they want to go to seven, eight, again, we're only putting money in the fund. We're not setting any precedent here as what we're gonna spend in the piggy bank.
It's almost like the board's created, but yet there's a leash on it with what they can and cannot do. That's the thing. Like, the board was created to do just this. You can put fifty in there. They don't use it, rolls back over. I mean, it's the same concept. Like I said, maybe put the ten in there. I, they have, they should have a fair shot. They didn't get to do what they needed to do last year.
Mr. Lindsay?
I would not be good with anything over thirty-five.
Can I ask why?
The, is the, there, um, stuff done from Lynette yet, or is it going to be done? Are they going to be able to do anything, or?
Again, if you put ten in there and then nothing gets done, then the ten just is there at the end of the year like it never even happened to begin with. But I think.
I wouldn't be good with it.
I'm at thirty-five. Let's go Shammy, then you.
Yes, sir.
I'll do thirty-five.
Thirty-five. There's four members in favor of thirty-five. Mr. Lowry?
Okay, well, I just, I just don't understand really the, the thought behind it, because we, the city's better off than what we were last year, and we're cutting it down seven thousand dollars less. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
I guess my feeling is, is that we, we were together when we only had a hundred ninety-five dollars.
With who?
When we only had a.
Oh, okay, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, like, that still will always live down, and my memory is a very, very scary moment for us, when Lynette, not Lynette, Kim Jones came in and said, hey, we have a hundred ninety-five, a hundred ninety-five, and we're like, a hundred ninety-five thousand or a hundred ninety-five dollars. And it was just a hundred ninety-five dollars. And so that will always ring bare in my mind about being fearful. Because we cut two cops. I know we're not near that yet, but, you know, our levy's up next year. That fails.
Ivan, I think.
That's, this is my personal view of it.
Well, if that's, if that's your outlook, I think we should be really reconsidering the project. Because you're looking at seven thousand dollars for that. I mean, this is, this is a Parker Rec.
And to answer back to that would be, we've already spent that much in rent in less than ten years of the building we're currently at. So.
Sure.
I, I don't think that has, that, but that's a massive difference between the two.
Well, I wasn't saying it's between the two, but I'm saying it's.
But.
Seven thousand dollars ain't gonna make or break the budget this year.
Yeah.
The other, the other project would.
Yeah, I think council, from my understanding, is we're pretty locked in at three thousand five hundred. Miss McKenzie, you have something to say?
Yeah, um, I think, I think you're missing the point here. Um, Ricky said you're putting money in as like a piggy bank. We're not, we're not going out and spending twenty-five thousand dollars on a little bit. But it would be nice if we could do things for disadvantaged families and, um, things that other cities have, but we don't, just because we haven't been able to get it organized because of money or legal. So, just to have that much money, you're saying we could do an Easter egg hunt and maybe something for Christmas, and that's it. If that's all you, if, if that's all we feel we can provide for families and children here, then I don't think that's good enough.
Thank you for your opinion.
Let me ask you this. If we go back to my manager page, did we cut some things out of that to give to the Parks and Rec Board?
No.
No, let's just run an experiment here. We'll just take something from the manager department to make it, make it equal out. Because I really do believe that the Parks and Rec Board should have some money to do programs with the citizens for. So that being said, um, let's just cut my, some of my stuff. So I'm willing to take my capital.
Mr. Bridge, one second. Mr. Cook was first.
Okay. Our proposed budget is, what, the general fund, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand ballpark? Okay.
After expenses, it goes down to nine oh four.
All right, and what have we done? We've increased, what, two or three thousand so far?
Twenty, no, a lot more than that. Put twenty, we put fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Well, without.
Okay, we're in the fifty, no.
Thirty-five thousand dollar increase?
Thirty-five thousand dollar increase.
Estimate.
All right, so if, if we go throw another seven in, what's called your, forty-two thousand, over and above the nine forty-nine. Our actual budget for two thousand eighteen was eight hundred and twenty-nine, and we had a surplus of a hundred and fifty thousand?
When, last year?
Yeah.
Well, the surplus was, uh, we ended last year with eight seventy, no, eight twenty-nine.
Was it eight hundred and seventeen thousand?
We ended last, no, we ended last year with nine hundred forty-nine dollars, nine hundred forty-nine thousand. Is that what you're asking?
But I see what you're saying. That's what we ended with. But a projection ended is seven hundred and five thousand, plus we have to take off another thirty-five off that seven oh five. So it now goes into the six hundreds.
Yeah, but if you look at our net difference every year at the end of it, we usually carry over about three hundred. In sixteen, we carried over three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars because we underspent the budget. In seventeen, we carried over three hundred four thousand because we underspent the budget. Uh, last year in eighteen, we only brought
Uh, last year in eighteen, we only brought over one twenty-five seventy, but we also had a lot of big capital expenses, especially within the finance department.
Potential loss, twenty, two hundred and forty.
So.
But the point is, this is a wish budget. Nothing has been said, "We're going to spend this money." I would much.
When you pass a budget, that means they spend the money.
No, it doesn't.
You have the ability to spend the money.
Well, we have the ability to twenty thousand dollars and everything.
You didn't spend ten thousand in the parks last year. You, you saved two thousand on the fireworks that we anticipated.
Mr. Cobb, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's the thing, I think everyone up there is, including, we're very passionate about the money and what we carry over. The mayor and vice mayor, I get it, a hundred percent. You, we want to watch that bottom line. Anyone who owns a business or runs a business knows you got to spend money to make money. It's, it's that simple. So I, I appreciate the open discussion we're having, because I think that everyone up there has a valid, and yes, Mr. Mayor Reynolds, you are right. It was a very good wake-up call for this city four or five years ago. Some of you guys weren't there for that. I was sitting in the room when it happened. It was a, a very gross feeling. So I understand that, but we're in a much better position now, guys. And I respect the watching those funds. But just because it's in, it doesn't mean it's going to get approved. So just keep that, just please keep that in mind when you're thinking about it.
Mr. Lindsay?
I have a question for Ms. McKenzie, Mrs. McKenzie. What type of events are you thinking of doing in nineteen? I know, uh, last year I seen on Facebook where there was an Easter egg hunt, uh, advertised and planned and whatnot, and then it didn't happen. It was on Facebook it was going to happen at a certain date. Uh, I, I don't think you put it on, somebody else put it on there. I don't even remember what her name was. Uh, who?
Ms. Brandy.
Yes.
We don't have interest for it, but since we didn't have our bylaws approved, our money available, we didn't.
But what I'm getting at, it was advertised publicly, even if it was Facebook, and then people showed up and there wasn't nothing there. So, I got phone calls on it.
I've never heard anything about it.
Well, since you're not on council, you probably wouldn't, and they probably don't know that you're in charge of the, of the parks and recs. I don't know if Mr. Bridge got any calls on it or not.
Not a one.
Okay.
I mean, it's easy to explain the situation, you're unable to.
And I understand that. So if, if you do the Easter egg hunt, what other plans do you have through the summer for, for activities or events or whatever you're working at?
Went over those last year, the same events. We would want to do a food truck rally. Um, we want to do a Christmas type program. We'd really like to have Santa down here. The park looks beautiful, and it has snow everywhere. It would be nice to have an event down here for that. Um, there's a list of things that we were working on last year, and we just can't be able to do it.
I'm up for five thousand. Just to end this, we meet somewhere in the middle between the two sides, get it done and over with. We spent twenty minutes on this discussion over a couple of thousand, so, no offense, Mr. Lindsay.
I have one other thing to say.
I'll get to you, but Mr. Lowry, how do you feel about five thousand?
I, I can go with that.
All right, Mr. Shammy, how do you feel about five thousand? Mr. Lindsay, how do you feel about five thousand?
I'd be good with that, but I, I also want to know.
Mr. Lindsay, wait a second. Mr. Cook, how do you feel about that?
Do it.
Mr. Cobb?
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Lindsay, you have your last two minutes on the topic. Go ahead.
When are we going to, uh, the bylaws for them?
I would recommend you guys probably get new bylaws that's more in line with the city of New Coral Island.
Needs to get done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you need a sixty-page bylaw that also governs your planning board and board is meeting appeals.
The bylaws we had before, I, one time I had a copy of them, I'm not, I'd have to look for it. You may have a copy. In fact, I think I got it from you. Once you bring the bylaws forward, and we'll tweak them a little bit if we have to, and then just pass them.
All right.
Well, that'd have to be a vote through council to pass, because.
Well, exactly. I mean, it'd have to be brought before council.
Let's just get it running.
And.
Waited a year for Lynette?
Yeah, we waited a year on Lynette and God knows how many thousands of dollars, and.
That's not true, and it's kind of, no.
We have, we waited a year.
She just didn't do anything with it, that's my opinion.
It's all right.
You know, because we don't have them yet. We're off track.
Anyhow.
All right, moving on, uh, yes.
No, 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 it's in the same page.
Oh, that's going to do fireworks.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lowry?
No, that's.
No, go ahead. I, that's what we were moving on to.
That's what I was just going to, I, I just was hoping you weren't going off the page.
Oh, gosh, no.
So, no, I'm all for it, because it was, uh, I think locally, it was great for the local economy.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
Yes. Is that something you guys want to up?
All right, matter of fact, this is, one second, Mr. Cook, Mr. Rain, Mr. Bridge, sorry. Uh, did you get a call from like a firework company out of Pickwa?
A what?
A firework company out of Pickwa.
I got a call a month ago about American Fireworks.
Yeah, I got a random call today.
Yeah, very random.
And I was like, oh, well, you talked to our city manager, so I didn't know if he called you or not, and he said he could actually do just exactly what the other company did, but at a cheaper rate. I mean, I don't know if we want to be more loyal to Rosy, who's been here for, for us, or, or what the deal is for us, the price, but I just want to throw that out there, that we could get more bang for our buck with another company. We don't know where it's at yet, but I just randomly got a call, so I, I gave him the office number.
Oh, thank you.
But, but wait a second, Mr. Lowry?
I got a message too. I forget who the company was.
Like Aaron or something from?
I think it's American.
American, but it was like, his name was Aaron, he was from like Pickwa.
Right.
Yeah.
It's the same one the cattle company used.
Yes, yes. Yep, same one the cattle company used. He, he didn't mention that today.
Yeah, no, I thought Evans used Rosy.
The cattle did not use Rosy. They used American Fireworks.
Yeah, Kevin's did, and they were happy, they were good?
They seemed to be happy.
Yeah, we saw.
Mr. Cobb?
Take, take understanding there, the smaller shell, you go, yeah, you're going to save money. They told us that last year. If we went to a three-inch, two-inch, we saved money. But you don't have the spectacular and the heist up there.
Yeah.
Mr. Sham?
Yes, Mr. Bridge, what if we, would anybody know about, uh, having it on the radio? Like, radio, was it syndication or something like that?
You mean for advertising?
No, like, um, that's what they did. I know Austin's a little bit bigger than New Coral Isle.
Are you trying to like say like Channel Seven error fireworks show?
Is that what it is? Yeah. Is that goofy, or?
Yeah, I think we're, I think it's way too small of a show. I mean, I mean, I could be wrong, but I was assuming that like W E B N, fireworks for Labor Day is, is a massive event that brings half a million people in.
I just think, I mean, it was their first.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. It may be something new a local station would want to do, but I'd assume they would probably go to a city that spends a lot more on their fireworks than.
It was our first time. Execution was good as it was going to be, but.
The DJ was great, food was great.
It was, it was a fantastic event. Like, I would like to see more money in there, but that's.
That's actually what I was about to say. I want to see, I want to see five thousand dollars more in there. I thought we had an excellent show, but.
Oh, no, I didn't see it.
You, no, well, you sure prep for it all. I mean, just the.
Talk about short end of the stick. Are you all right? What's going on?
Oh, Charlie.
Okay, good, we can handle Charlie first.
Probably so. I mean, you had a, you had a record night, probably.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think that.
Really?
Yeah, I think we should increase it. How does council feel about five thousand, Mr. Cook?
Well, before you get into that, I mean, I'm all for increasing it. However, there is a possibility of tying in with the cattle company, and they spent X amount of dollars, and I had talked with them last year, which was too late, to incorporate them into our show for this year, or for last year. Also, I think possibly Mr., the holder, R D Holder, will be throwing some money our way. And I have approached Mike about his group taking that fireworks over, because the two people that did it, and the mayor got involved with some of the other peripheral stuff, I think we need more cooperation from everybody concerned in order to make this thing go. It can be whatever you want it to be.
Yeah.
And we also got to put money in there for a tow truck to rent too as well.
Oh, it makes sense. Mr. Cobb and Mr. Cook?
Tow truck wouldn't go in there.
Twelve-thirty at night is not fun.
I believe I pulled him out.
It was a fantastic event.
All I can tell you, I wasn't there.
No, you was not.
That is fair.
No, you were there on the night we got him stuck.
Yeah.
I'll say one, give me, whenever they're done.
I think they're good. Mr. Lowry?
Oh, okay. I, I mean, yeah, I would like to see it go up to, I mean, you're, I'm assuming talking fifteen.
Yes, definitely.
We, we budgeted ten, right, but we only spent eight.
Yeah, eight.
I mean, I would like to say budgeted at ten and do ten instead of eight. That's just me. Huh? That's all said.
Again, if we go to the smaller shell, we're going to get more bang for our buck. You know, but I think these are things that we need to talk with American and with Rosy.
Do you just want to take it to twelve so that we can do ten, because just in case they're, you know, if they do it right at ten?
Excuse me, I mean.
They used four-inch shells over here last year, and a few three. For the ten thousand, we paid.
Eight.
Huh?
Eight thousand.
Or eight thousand, excuse me.
Eighty-one dollars.
If you go smaller down to three and twos, you don't get the heist up in the sky.
Yeah, I know.
You couldn't see the, what'd you go?
So, I think, I like fifteen. What do you think, Mr. Lowry? Start this way and work way back that way.
Okay. I don't have a problem with fifteen. Um, maybe, just say yes. Can I use that same on you when I need something? Just say yes.
I don't know. This is what it is.
Okay, let me ask your two opinion on this. I mean, obviously, we're going to take the, the, you know, the hit publicly if someone says, oh, you're spending, now you're spending more on fireworks. You don't, but, I mean, what do you think?
Well, I've been to very big fireworks. I'm born in New York, so I've seen big shows, and I was there. I came to the pool, and it was a spectacular show for the amount of money. It was, I was very impressed with that. Um, and the, the perception of the public and all the people and all your residents, it was such a good feeling that you did this. And, and like she said, it, it brought in a lot of money for the pool, um, so we get half the money back anyway, and a different venue, but, um, I think it's a really good thing, and it's a good thing for the residents here. It's a feel-good thing that we're doing. You're always going to have some naysayers when you're spending money, but I think this is a good thing, and I, you know, with, uh, the pricing of everything. You don't want, not want to have enough money to do at least what you did last year.
Right.
So, you know, once again, you put the money in there, we don't have to spend it, we find something, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things again. But I think it was such a good thing for this city to do that.
Oh, yeah.
It was a very positive.
Yeah, I, I heard, uh, like I said, I don't know if it's true, I wasn't up there. I heard that Jason's the, at the ice cream store, I heard he was just slammed.
And the ballpark, tons of people too.
All the businesses.
I heard that, uh, I G A sold adult beverages more that night than any.
Yeah.
Yes. I wasn't crowd controlled that night. Was it?
All of those people.
Oh, yeah, it was a control. We didn't have any issues, traffic. We thought we were going to have any issue with traffic, people coming and out. No issues directing traffic at the end of the night, and, and they were, Arrow Queen was extremely busy. I mean, I think everything went really smooth for it being the first year.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, I think we need extra police patrol and particularly that traffic light there, like.
So maybe we need to figure that. I mean, I mean, uh, uh, extra duties went with thirty-nine dollars an hour?
Twenty.
Twenty-nine dollars an hour, so we're going to have to add more. We're going to have to get, that's something we're going to take.
Yeah, I mean, you can make it a mandatory work day. I mean, it's on usually what, a, do you do it on Fourth of July, or is it like a Saturday?
Yeah.
You always try, you always try and pick a date where someone next to you isn't doing it.
Like eating.
I mean, so typically, there'd be two of us here anyhow. Uh, you know, you'd contract those other two deputies that work out here, and Underwood has them work that day, and you've got four people out here.
June twenty-ninth or something like that, the Saturday, or we do the Sixth of July, or, you know, but yeah, I think.
I'm fine with, no, you're fine. I'm fine with fifteen. I mean, it's a good, it's a good morale boost for the city, which is, we always need.
All right, what do you think?
That's great PR-wise, too.
One second, we'll get to you, we're going to go down the line. Mr. Sham?
Didn't we talk about more food trucks as well?
Yeah, we had two.
That's all, that's not always as easy said as done, but yeah.
Right, right. Well, that's where the Parks and Rec Board come in, their food truck drive.
Yeah, most, a year or two in advance.
I'm sure they are. I'm, I'm good with it.
Mr. Lindsay?
Fifteen?
Yep.
I don't know, Mike wants too much money. Yeah, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Cook? Skip him. I was, I was going to. Mr. Cook, how do you feel about fifteen?
I'm, I'll go with whatever you want to. I don't care.
Fantastic. Mr. Cobb?
Hundred thousand?
No.
Maybe not that much.
We'll make a harbor.
What would it cost to have two more deputies for, what is?
Twenty-nine dollars an hour.
Twenty-nine dollars an hour. I want more than that, though.
So you're saying instead of four, like do even more than that?
I think we give mine for four.
How is traffic control at the end of it?
I will gladly pay to have.
It was a bad.
I will pay for the deputies for two hours.
She went out when the one went out, and we were both in bikes.
The D C last night, and everything else.
You know, if you had one or two people doing bike patrol, kind of covering the grounds, and then one deputy who just came out for that last, you know, hour, and just had, you know, a cruiser visible to kind of assist with some of that traffic control help, but it actually was not bad, considering that there wasn't a car out there.
Okay, so traffic control, uh, Mr. Cook and I were on traffic control, and I was staying right.
That explains all the wrecks.
He tried to push me out in the traffic, but, uh, I find myself, uh, directing traffic out of, uh, I G A parking lot and, um, without a bright flashlight.
Oh.
That's stuff we can prepare for, so.
So if it's thirty dollars an hour, just say it's thirty dollars an hour. Your time's up, it's ninety dollars an hour. So we have them there for five hours, it'd be four hundred fifty bucks.
Well, and keep in mind, too, I, uh, the deputy who oversees the Explorer program, like I was kind of telling you, Mr. Bridge, um, they have, uh, young people, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-one, who are basically like cadets. They are uniforms people. They do not carry guns. They are just, um, basically kind of training, learn some things where, but they can wear the vest, and, I mean, they would be able to do traffic patrol as well, and they are free. They do not get paid, they just are putting in volunteer hours, so we could, you know, utilize fireworks with them.
There we go.
Mr. Cobb?
Free's always good.
Have we ever took care of Mr. Hastings for his?
That's something we need to get on.
Because I'd hate to ask him again after we promised to.
Yeah.
Apply.
We'll get to that.
Who?
I'm running. Not Mr. Hastings, but I know who you're talking, Hensley. I got you, I got what you were putting down.
Oh, okay.
Fantastic.
Oh, yeah, he don't want one.
I know.
No one wants.
No one, no, I'll talk to them later.
Yeah, I, I know.
Did I tell you?
Yeah, you did. So, all right, fifteen?
Is it fifteen?
Fantastic.
Thank you, guys. That was a great event. I appreciate you.
Lands and buildings.
And can I also say all of our food vendors need to be self-contained, as far as power and water?
No, they, that, that won't happen.
Yeah, water.
That happens.
Oh, they got generators now?
They got generators.
Do they need a ba- battery back, like electrical backup, though?
No.
Apparently, the white vendors have to be self-contained, you know, providing the power.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, all of them, you know, they, they, as far as water, that's no big deal. We can get the water.
Okay.
The water, the water ran for, uh, for Whittier's wings, and, yeah, so they had, so Whittier's wings had to use the water.
Then they have to plug into electricity, too?
Yeah.
That's why I knew there was.
Well, we can get water.
But he had a generator there.
But as far as electric, you kept catching a breaker in the consumption.
Yeah, I don't think they, yeah, they don't think they use the, the generator.
Got it.
Yeah, he has a generator because it sits up here.
Yeah, well, I'm saying he didn't use it on that day. I'm not saying he doesn't have one. All righty, fifteen. Mr. Bridge, lands and buildings.
Anything stick out other than the six-figure item down there at the bottom, word at the bottom?
Yeah, no, I see it.
Looks good.
Any comments on this page?
No comments.
Fantastic.
What? What about, what, what do you, what?
Yeah, the very last page says. Miscellaneous.
Forgot about that.
Just a secret from the cameras. No one knows about that. You know, it's all right. All right. Mr. Bridge, miscellaneous.
Any discussion?
Council? Hearing done. Next page. Oh, Mr. Lindsay?
The computer and software, is that, uh, for the finances?
This is miscellaneous, so it can be used in, throughout the city.
Okay, it can be used for whatever.
You know, so if we have to get like antivirus updates or stuff like that.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, obviously, we have to have forty-five thousand scheduled for our audit fees, because.
Yeah, you think I'm loving a job, you can make that change, maybe?
We have a new state auditor. I don't work for Mr. Faber. Ah, sorry.
Well, you can't like flex the muscles over.
Again, a possible rule state, meaning, no, no, elected official has the authority to tell them to officially.
Um, oh, yeah, yeah, one thing I do want to pick out about this, okay. Um, codification, codification update. If you look at the history of that, five thousand, five fifty-nine, three thousand proposed, yeah, when I got the quote back last year, we didn't have enough in the budget. So I actually had to put more in there. I don't anticipate us using the whole full twelve, but we, I didn't send our codification update in last year. I'm only required to do it once every five years, but when you do that, you're stuck with a massive charge at year five, because it's not cheap to do this. Um, so I need to do seventeen and eighteen off of this twelve thousand dollars. So if anyone is worried about why there's such an increase, that's why. And what that does, if you go online, W W New Orleans, you follow our codes online, it's updated that way. That's, that's, we, a company actually does that, and that's what it's.
American Legal Publishing.
Exactly.
Yeah, they handle most of them.
So again, we only required to do it every five years. The last time I did it was in sixteen, so if you guys wanted to hold off, we would have to anticipate a bigger charge as the longer we wait.
Yeah, we've had a lot of legislation updates, too.
It was a lot.
Fees move up, down, or sleeves this last past year. We have a lot of legislation, so I would say.
Okay, so keep in mind.
What does council feel on that? I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think the twelve thousand's fine.
If that comes, if that is higher than the twelve, we'll have to come back through to amend the appropriations. I don't think it will come in twelve. If it does come in over twelve, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there, but it needs to be done at some point.
Fantastic. All right, last.
Hey, you will notice that there is no transfer into the swimming pool. How does council feel about that?
Awesome.
Where's that at?
Should we put something there just in case?
Just so Michael feel the lights.
Well, I'm counting on.
It's not about Michael or April, it's about if it's going to potentially help the pool. I think we should put something in there just in case.
I think it's something at the end of the year, if we need to do it, we can, we'll have to go through the processes. Again, you guys can more or well put something in there. Uh, we left the blanks that you guys can discuss.
If you don't have it in there, you bust it, so let's not bust it, right?
Well.
What, what about some of the equipment down there? Is there any possibility?
Oh, God.
I mean, I don't want to see another pool heater go, or.
And we just got a new one.
Well, I know, but.
Ninety-five.
Twenty-eighteen.
Ninety-five.
That comes out of the pool fund.
Ninety-five.
Yeah. Before we get to you, Mrs. Watson, you had something about it?
Uh, no, when you were talking, I was, all the expenses of the pool still comes out of the pool fund. This is just, you know, but they, uh, you budgeted thirty-five thousand last year to transfer. Um, we only had to transfer ten, which still leaves for an opening balance of six thousand dollars, a little more than that. So it's not like they're starting out with nothing.
Good.
So, but I don't have a preference, I mean, whatever you decide, I just wanted you to know how that worked. But, so, and that's a good thing. It's a really good thing that we're looking at, we don't have to fund it. The general fund does not, they, the fund themselves.
It's funding itself.
Yes, it's funding itself, so that's kind of exciting.
Yes, it's funding itself. So that's kind of exciting.
We, we've never started with the starting balance. It's always been zero. But since we put extra in there for the transfer, the 10,000 transfer, like she said, we have, they have a 6,000 balance. So that's essentially not, I won't say it is like a $6,000 transfer to help cover it up. But, you know, it is something to help them start off with. But I knew that would be another topic of discussion amongst council members, so we left it. I really just, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys, how you guys wanna move forward. It's not gonna hurt to put it in there to help protect it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it needs it, great. If not, then it just rolls back in.
Mr. Cobb.
Once again, I wanna see an increase on non-residents. Huber Heights, Tip City, Marane, Inglewood, and everybody else charges extra for a single, and they charge extra for a family. And I'd like to see that added in there.
Is that for out-of-town peoples, what you're talking about?
Yeah, non-residents. I'm looking at it this year. I'm not, I'm not talking about booking parties. I'm talking about the individual walks up to the gate. And we should do the same.
Real fast, do you know what they charge at Huber Heights and Tip?
They charge more than us.
I'm gonna...
Eight dollars a person, but they have a lot of...
Yeah. And what do we charge?
We charge six for adults and five for children.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Just was wondering. Sorry. Thank you. I see what you're saying, Mr. Cobb. That's something that, you know, is it a budget item? That's one that we'll have to discuss in council to actually make that vote if we would choose to raise fees. So if you wanna raise fees, then you can make a motion at the next meeting, not the next budget meeting, but the next meeting, to do that. And we'll vote on it then. All right. Mr. Lowry.
What was that look? Okay, so if we were to put any money into here, you know, whatever it is, 5,000, 10, 20, 30, whatever, maybe, that can be used for upgrades or whatever is needed.
Sure, whatever, I mean, whatever it's needed. Sorry, if the pool doesn't have enough money to, to, you know, be sufficient on its own, the pool fund. But remember that $11,000 that we spent last year, we're not spending this year. So we even have another 11 in that pool fund that's available.
Right.
But, yes, you're absolutely right. If you put money in here, once again, it's the same idea as all the funds. It's just there for safekeeping and...
Well, I mean, me personally, there's a, I mean, there's the wish list of things I'd love to see done at the pool. I mean, it's made up, you know, $40,000 turnaround.
Well, you already done your capital for 19, so I don't, would you, would you add anything for the pool capital in 19?
Well...
There's only 10,000 in there for pool maintenance in 2019.
Okay.
Good thing about that though is we always can amend.
Yeah.
So, Mike, what's your ideas? Sorry, Randy. Mike, go ahead. I, I will hear.
What do you want to know?
What, what ideas and updates? I, I think you have a lot of great ideas.
It hasn't changed since it was open, other than paint. I mean, you, you know the bathrooms that are in there?
Oh, yes.
They're open ceilings. It's, it's kinda gross, to be honest.
And they have like the bathtub type urinal?
It looks like a, like a horse.
I'm not gonna lie to you all. I, I never used the restroom. I would literally go home, come back, and that was how I handled it.
That says it right there. The trough. Okay, so, you know, but I think women are a little bit more picky about bathrooms than men.
It's also a swimming, like, I mean, Lord. My swimming pool bathroom was, I wore flip flops even going to the pool.
You budgeted 35 last year to transfer, so budget 20 this year. And, I mean, you're still, or 15, and you're, you're cutting the budget from last year to this year.
The one thing that needs fixed is the pool lights, the inside pool lights.
Mm-hmm, they're old.
And that's, to me, that's a serious safety concern.
But that should have been discussed when we were doing the capital program.
Yeah.
Well, we're here now. We can amend, so.
Well, I'll go into that conversation later because I have also other issues with that as far as how some of that.
Well, that's a charter issue. Cause I don't, I mean, it is, I can't, that's the way that we have to do it. We do capital first and then go...
No, 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 I, no, you're, but anyway, so, but yeah, bathroom, some bathroom updates would be amazing.
So can we put some in, Ms. Watson, can we put some in there for the transfer in? And then, Mr. Bridge, can we go back and amend our C I P just for the pool line item and...
We have to amend the C I P anyway.
Oh, we do. So why not do it?
Mike, there you go. First off, does anyone have any quotes? How much is it gonna cost to change out those lights? Last time I talked to Charlie about it, it was like a 30, 40, maybe $50,000 project.
That's not what I had heard. But let's say that is the case. Is it safety number one versus a lawsuit?
Are these lights in the pool that you're talking about?
They're real yellow and dim by now.
What kind of a figure did you have on those lights?
A whole lot less than 30, 40,000. I was...
Well, give me, give me a number.
Less than, I thought it was less than 10.
It's not gonna be less than 10. They gotta replace their lights. Their wiring is probably out of code, so that's gonna have to be replaced, you know? So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's, I just remember talking about it. I thought it was with you, but apparently I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Because why, once you take the light, I mean, some money in, about to get the quote, because it needs to be done. I agree with you. Absolutely. I just don't know what that number's gonna be.
We can always amend?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, since we gotta do it now, put it in there.
Yeah.
Cause we gotta amend anyway.
Exactly.
But I would just put it to a comfortable point that we're not gonna have to amend again. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like really put a number amount in there because...
30.
Here's the thing, like, if that pool's making money, the lights need updated, the bathrooms need done like you guys discussed. I would love to see the outside of that building painted. The one out back, the one out back. Isn't it like chipping in the back?
Everything was repainted.
In the back corner where that shed is, that's... Let me retract minus the paintings, you know? I don't go down there often, man.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the bathroom and stuff be done through capital improvements or the C I P?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm...
That's what we're gonna update.
That's what I'm saying. We're gonna...
So, so then we need to put the money in the budget here on the line item for the C I P updates, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I need, yeah, I need to...
And if we're gonna do the bathrooms, and you wanna go with what, urinals?
Well, what I'm saying, I don't mean like tear down walls.
But a stall that is legitimately nine foot long and there's literally 20 people standing there.
Yeah, it, it creeps a lot of people out.
What are you doing?
I went home. I legit went, biked home because of that one issue. I had a pass. I just come back.
I, I think... What, what kind of an estimate are we talking between the lights and bathroom? It's on 50,000?
I couldn't imagine being that much.
Do you want to do 30? It's less than what we had last time.
Yeah.
Do you know, no?
Well, let's put 30,000 in there for the capital, for the upgrades. Then let's get some numbers and do that. Because all I can see is if those lights are giving us a problem, we could have a monstrous lawsuit. We'd be spending a lot more than that.
Are you guys doing that on a transfer line item? Or do you wanna put that directly into the C I P?
We have to have it in the...
However you wanna do it.
Put it on, however it has to be done.
We haven't got to the pool fund yet. That's coming down the road. So do you guys want that in a transfer line item? Cause that way, the much we transferred in, as long as the C I P amend matches, we should be good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
30,000.
Are you okay with that logic? Mike, you go with that?
Yeah, I guess.
All right.
What's the number?
Wait a second. 30. Are you good with 30? Jamie's good with 30. I'm good with 30. Mr. Lindsay.
This pool manager.
Mr. Cobb.
Are you okay with 30?
I was gonna get to her at the end. Mr. Cobb, you good with 30?
Did you see her eyes light up?
All right, good.
They don't wanna kick money away. Well, you know when it starts at zero, we can't go down from zero, correct?
No, you can. You can close it.
No, you can't.
Well, the pool is doing, you know, at one time I was a fan of closing the pool because it was $40,000 in the hole. Hadn't made money for a couple of years. And I was a fan of closing that pool in 2015. But the management changed. There's a better, there's a better accounting of the funds that's coming in and going out at the pool now. And you can't argue with a $6,000 profit. And they had a profit last year too. I think it was only like 3,000 or 4,000, but still it was a profit.
They didn't have a profit last year. I agree with you. 100%. Hey, is there anything that needs to be done in that kitchen to make it more comfortable for people who work in there?
Air conditioning, air conditioning.
How did the Young's Dairy ice cream sell last year? Are you gonna do that again this year? Fantastic.
Fantastic. So we're complete with these pages.
Yeah. I'm gonna make changes on this. First off, thank you for a great, another great budget work session. It's good to hear people's ideas and how we're gonna move the city forward. To the citizens watching on home, it's all, it's all really you guys for passing the please levy. So thank you on that. So I, what I'll do is I'll go make these changes and then I will print out, you guys want new copies of this? Or you just want me to email it to you? Because I'm gonna be adding on to it as the funds become, because next, we have another one Wednesday, right?
Yep.
So I gotta spend the next couple of days plugging in what she's come up with into my version for the remaining funds. So I'll just go ahead and update this and I'll email you guys out right after.
Yeah, we still, what, funds left?
Yeah, we still got the remaining.
Some in dairy and all that good stuff.
And we're gonna hit it hard. We got, we got three more budget work sessions to get through the rest of the budget.
Streets.
Well, a lot of that stuff, I think a lot of the discussion comes from this one. The general fund is the big one.
Right.
You know, the street construction, there's only so much we can do. Water, there's only so much...
Last time we went, literally three days.